The end of the corridor on the right and an accessible toilet just to the right of the lift. I think most of you have helped yourselves to tea and coffee, so we're okay there. Tonight Paul is going to clerk. We've got Laura and Becca managing minutes, question board, participant settings and IT generally. The meeting is being recorded and will be made available on our YouTube channel. If there's any councillors attending via Zoom, please use your yellow hand if you've any questions and anybody else, please post them on the Q and A board. First on our agenda tonight is a presentation from Police Inspector Rachel Clarke. Rachel, if you'd like to come straight up.
That was great.
Turn the microphone on.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, my name's Rachel Clarke. Some of you may know me from some of the fundraising in the community that I do and also my time here as a sergeant. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of introduction to what an inspector does and a little bit about my career. Just I won't bore you with it, don't worry, I've done that with Nick the other week. But I have been a police officer for 20 years now and an inspector just for three. But I was a BEA officer and a local sergeant here on the neighbourhood team up until three years ago when I was promoted to the rank of inspector and then I got posted down to South Somerset. And then I covered a big area, Yeovil, Chad, Crewe, Ilmwood, Somerton and Wincanton. So a very large geographical area with high demand. So that experience was invaluable. The opportunity came to return to the Mendips as my old inspector calls it, my spiritual home, which so it's lovely to be back. But there is only one of me and I do cover the Mendips. People know I've landed back at Frum and I've had several lines of inquiry come straight into me as it used to be, sort of three or four years ago, but my role has changed and obviously my position has changed. Doesn't mean to say I can't make a difference in this town, you know, I fully intend to, but things that we're going to do can't happen overnight. So as I said, I'm a neighbourhood inspector and I'm responsible for the delivery of neighbourhood policing in Frum and Shepton, Glastonbury, Street and Wells. So they're split into two teams. So I'm the second line manager for those two teams. First line manager being the sergeant, obviously for Frum and Shepton, and a sergeant for Welsh Street, Glastonbury. And we're neighbourhood officers, so we're different to what we call patrol officers. So the patrol officers are the 24/7 cops, as you call it, that go to the RTCs and the domestics and the theft in progress. And we work alongside them, but our role is more of a front-facing, problem-solving, engagement role. That's not to say that we don't go to those jobs because, and you all know how thinly spread we are, and those patrol officers very often do run out, there's not many of them, and we back up. So the local officers here in Frum are regularly going to the incidents out on the bypass and town centre. I might repeat myself to some of the people that do know, but just for the makeup of it and where we are located is in a big open plan office above KFC. So we're very lucky here in Frum because we still have a neighbourhood footprint, we have a neighbourhood team. The patrol officers no longer work in Frum, they're no longer based in Frum. They used to be, but sort of several years ago, and they've centralised our policing. So our central hub of 24/7 cops are based in Shepton and they cover the Mendips. There's five teams there. But in each of our neighbourhood teams, sorry, in each of our Mendip neighbourhood areas is your neighbourhood team and that's the staff that I manage. And those are the people that you'll see at your meetings, community events, PCSOs and what we call BEA managers. Obviously they are PCs, but their role is as a BEA manager. So they are, as I said, responsible for neighbourhood policing in the town. So you've got, I don't know if you, I'm sure, hopefully you have met him because I've only been on three years and I like to think you've seen him in that time, but Daniel Jeffries is the sergeant for the town and Ellis Ryle is the PCSO supervisor. So you have a handful of PCs and a little bit more PCSOs. I wanted to talk about recruitment and numbers on the list, but I mean, I'll head into that now really as we're on it. So we've had a PCSO recruitment pause, so we haven't been able to recruit any more PCSOs and those that have left us has not been backfilled. And that is due to be lifted in the spring, so we're waiting for confirmation on that. But we're very lucky here in Frum is that our PCSOs are really happy and not many of them want to leave or move on. So we've retained ours, an actual fat. I haven't poached her, but we have just had a wonderful PCSO with seven years' experience down in Yeovil, just recently joined the Frum team a couple of days ago. So we've actually slightly grown where other teams are rapidly shrinking. So it's about getting the best we can out of what we've got and that's my job, to make sure that, you know, their performance is where it should be, their delivery of their policing is where it should be and obviously to look at any sort of other matters such as problem-solving, collaboration, because that's really critical in what we do. We're collaborating every day, every day that the staff are going to meetings, whether it's retail, licensing, council, yeah, there's all sorts really. So Anita gave me a list, I didn't have my own agenda, I didn't need one, because Anita gave me a list of 10 things, which was, and I like it because there's 10 items, well there's nine items and the last one says your plans for the town. What I want to say is everything above really. So there's quite a few things and I've got some literature to leave with you and some items just to have a read, but I will just run through, and I know you, we may double up because you're going to have a look at road safety afterwards. Well, I don't know, to be honest, I've only been back a month and I've, I'll be honest, I've spent that month going out to some community meetings, meeting people, I've met Nick, who's our sort of police liaison officer and I'm happy with that level of meeting, that's going really well. I've been to, I've met, you know, Glastonbury Town Council, Street, neighbourhood watch groups and I've spoken to the teams to see how they're feeling. And they, everybody expects me to come in and change lots of things, but I don't want to change things if they're not broken. But I think for me, what we need to improve on is our communication. I think we're really good at doing what we're doing with what we've got, but I don't think we're very good about telling you. So that's one thing that we need to improve. I know we've got our Facebook and our social media pages, but I don't want to keep seeing the same things on there, you know, day in, day out. So on your, on the list, I've got Crime Stoppers. So in terms of, do you want to know about the How to Report?
Just a brief mention.
Oh, a brief mention, yeah. So it's an independent charity, then obviously people can report anonymously to that. So I've left you some, so I've left you some literature on some of the things I'm going to talk about. Yeah, that'd be good. The Fatal Five you mentioned and Walk and Talk. So recently, I don't know if you've seen it in our social media platforms. So if you want to know what we're doing and what we're up to, there's two things I would urge you to link in with is our Facebook page. Now unfortunately, I'd love to have just a Frum page, but that luxury was taken off a good couple of years ago now, so we just have a Mendip page. So that page is shared between those other Mendip towns, but each of those licence holders that can, and the PCSOs and PCs that can update and upload any images or any literature to those pages, know that there's an element of fairness and proportionality, so they don't want to flood it with just with Frum every day, day in, day out. They've got to share it with Welsh Street and Glastonbury and Shepton. So that's the Mendip Facebook page. And the other page for us, for you to look at, if you want to know what we're doing and who we are, is through our Avon and Somerset website and that's our BEA pages. And that would give you a picture of the officers that cover you wherever you put in your postcode and it gives you the priorities, what we're working on. Now, I landed three or four weeks ago and did an audit of all those pages and they're a little bit outdated. So some of the pictures are a bit outdated and some of the priorities outdated. So some socks have been pulled up and they should be more reflective of what they're doing at the moment. We just took the foot off the gas and we've had a busy summer, huge demand over the summer. Obviously our population goes up in Somerset, various things going on, so anyway, those priorities are updated, should update on a regular kind of fortnightly basis and the Facebook page is a regular thing. You'll see on there whether, where they're going to be for this or come, come talk to us sessions and yeah, and other engagement opportunities that they've been to. Rose, policing I know is, I mean, it's no secret that I live in Frum and we've got some very dangerous roads around us. And there is a lot of work gone on and still going on in terms of the bypass. I don't know if you had the opportunity, it was, it was on the news about the operation, roads policing operation we did in the week, sort of 11th to the 14th, really successful. What I describe as rich pickings in uncharted territory. So we, our roads policing unit came over to Frum and were kind of flabbergasted by the amount of work that we then created and with what they dealt with. So it was proactive targeting road users basically who pose the greatest risks on our roads and commit criminal offences. So it was a joint operation, roads policing, our tactical support teams, our neighbourhood teams, our communications, our intelligence to give us the picture of what we, who we were going after and what we're looking for and obviously some enforcement on our corporate comms. So we had really good results for Frum, really good results. I don't know if any of you have the chance to see the video, that has been online, but it's quite impactful. We had an arrest for driving offences. Unfortunately, one of our most prolific shoplifters was driving that day, so he got arrested and he's breached his community behaviour order. We had an arrest for possession with intent to supply and a failed appearance, an arrest for drug drive, supply of Class A, an arrest for supply of Class A and a prison recall, an arrest for, another arrest for drug drive and two uninsured vehicles seized and we recovered 25 bags of Class A plus approximately £800 in cash. And finally, 106 speeding offences, two of which were 61 miles per hour in a 30 mile per hour limit. So quite staggering results there in a day, a day's operation. So what I would like to do is get our roads policing teams here more often. So I am currently working with, I don't know if you know, an officer called Daniel Cox, Anita. So we are currently now linking with each other and looking at having more of a visible presence here. So well in the north, what we call Somerset East is our district, so one in the north in Frum and one in the, not one, but a presence in the north and a presence in the south. So that's positive. The AI camera is coming at the end of January, I've had that confirmed to me yesterday. So that was in the, also in the, you're aware of that, aren't you, and that was in the media? That will be... So that, it's not, it's a bit better than what you would call the old kind of Gaps O yellow cameras, it's a, it will pick up all sorts of offences such as it can pick up if you're on your mobile phone, seatbelt offences and that'll be positioned on the bypass. That's quite common, it's, it's been obviously in the media, hasn't it? And I think it's, yeah, I think, but it's not there yet. So as I said, I don't know what the delay has been, that was pre me landing, but I have had it confirmed that it is happening, being positioned at the end of January, but we'll get that confirmed to you. Drink Drug Christmas campaign, yeah, is happening. We usually used to call it Optonic, it's now going to be called Op Limit and that's in line with our National Police Chief Counsel, so it's a national thing, it's going to be called Op Limit. Have the patrol officers got time to proactively engage and do that or are they just answering call after call really? Well, yeah, so our neighbourhood teams are taking responsibility for Op Limit and we're going out this weekend as our first, so the Frum neighbourhood team are working this weekend on late, so they're going to go out this weekend. And that will continue through the month, you know, across the Mendips. Next on your list, support for CSW, was an interesting one. You have the most active CSW in the force. Oh, sorry, sorry, Community Speedwatch, Community, sorry, Community Speedwatch, the most active schemes in the force, largely down to obviously Mr Ashley Ray, who we work closely with. I'm going to his quarterly meeting tomorrow, actually up at the police station. But you mentioned support for CSW, do you, are you, is that... Oh, great, okay, yeah. Well, yeah, we give them, yeah. When I, I had to, well, just before I got promoted, I kind of wrote a service level agreement, which is that I would expect the PCSOs to go out at least once a month roadside because it's a community speed watch and I didn't want it to be police speed watch, you know, so, but obviously to support them minimum once a month. But Ashley, we have two designated officers who are the PCSO supervisors and they meet Ashley once a month now. That tailed off somewhat over the summer, but that's picked up again and they met last week. So they will look at anything that's going well and anything that's not going well. But reaching out to Ashley, who sends me quite a few emails, I'm sure he does with yourself, quite a number of emails per week. He's in a, yeah, we're in a very good place in terms of community speed watch. There's other areas that we're still trying to get schemes on board. There are some schemes that aren't as active as others, but I would just urge any schemes or if you're involved in any schemes just to communicate with us because each scheme will have a designated PCSO and that's their link then. And all they need to do is tell us when they're going out and we will do our best to be there. We just need a bit of notice. Unfortunately, we may well be driving to that scheme and we may get called away, but then I would expect that officer to then let them know that. So, but yeah, a very, a very good working relationship, highlighted recently by the Chief Inspector Steph McKenna, who is the lead for CSW in the force. But as I said, a lot of that work will be down to Ashley and his tenacity to make our roads a lot safer. Police recruitment, I've covered that, the AI camera, recent police day of action, working with providers on the ATV61, that's, I've just picked that up, so that's in hand with our, with highways and our road safety unit. And Walk and Talk. So Walk and Talk is an excellent initiative, so dealing with violence against women and girls. I don't know if, there has been, there have been articles in the press about it, there have been articles locally. Has anybody taken part in Walk and Talk? No? Okay. I will, just about to, yeah, just about to. So the term violence against women and girls refers to acts of violence or abuse that we know disproportionately affects women and girls. Crimes and behaviour covered by this term include rape and other sexual offences, domestic abuse, stalking, honour-based abuse, including female genital mutilation, forced marriage and honour killings, as well as many others, including offences committed online. So women and girls frequently report that they don't feel safe going about their daily lives. A recent study found that two out of three women aged 16 to 34 had experienced harassment in the previous 12 months and 29% felt that they were being followed. 50% of women who responded to our public service that they felt unsafe in public spaces. There's some, I won't go into it, there's quite a lot of data that we've got here, population data in terms of Somerset East and in terms of female victims in the last 12 months, 2,664 crimes and versus males, which was 848 crimes. This is in the last 12 months in Somerset East and that area is basically from Frum down to, down to Chad. So our aims and objectives, looking at that and looking at the VOG portfolio is to reduce the number of those VOG-related crimes and incidents in our area over the next 12-month period. To help women and girls feel safer in Somerset East and promote their confidence and improve internal culture within Somerset East's police officers and staff and to improve engagement, education, prevention and communication in relation to VOG. So the initiative, so Walk and Talk is basically an initiative that started in the Met Police in light of the number of violent and abusive acts that disproportionately affect women and girls, including the tragic murder of Sarah Everon. Women in the local community can go for a walk with a female officer, PCSO in uniform, where they feel vulnerable. They can talk through their concerns and issues and it gives the officer the lived experience of the person doing that Walk and Talk. Issues identified can then be raised to the relevant agency, council, housing etc, or dealt with internally by our neighbourhood team to problem solve. So you can apply online, I've left, which is the Walk and Talk leaflet, which you scan the QR code, you can find out a bit more about it and then you can apply. It's a simple, it's a simple form to fill out and then we will get in touch and organise that for you. So the local MP is coming out of this in the new year to experience that, which is very positive. And we'll do some, you know, some media release around that when she's ready, but that'll be in January, she's coming out. So I've been in touch with her, yeah, I was in touch with her, actually, I met her at Remembrance Parade and Anna's been in touch since, so she's going to take part in then January. So there's leaflets there that I've left for that, there's some drink drive leaflets and there's some crime stoppers as well. Anita, that is, your list covered. Is that, have I gone over time or am I done?
I think that's, that's been very helpful, Rachel. I know one or two councillors have got questions for you. I know also we've got a number of local traders in the room who might want to raise some questions, so gentlemen over there first maybe.
Evening, Rachel. I understand, I have a question for you. I understand you might not be here for item five on the agenda about the safer school streets for Frum.
Right.
And earlier you mentioned collaboration and also I believe, were you referring to the mobile ANPR camera?
Yes, yeah.
Ah, now in connection with that, I'm a resident of Oakfield Road.
Okay.
And I frequently observe the contraventions of the restriction time zone. I mean, it's just widely ignored. And I've done a bit of research online about the implementation of these schemes throughout the country and it seems that an ANPR camera is really the only way to properly enforce it. Or in one area, I think in London, they do actually use a physical barrier, which they have somebody there manning it and moving it backwards and forwards.
Okay.
But really, having looked at all these schemes and had some interaction with one council that, who've looked at other methods to try and enforce this, they jettisoned them because the only way really to properly enforce it is the use of an ANPR camera.
Or have a visible presence there every day, which we haven't got the capability to, yeah.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, if it's not, the enforcement doesn't go down that route.
Yeah.
With your lack of manpower, scheme is just going to fail.
Okay.
So I'm really urging you to have a look at it, to see whether you can, I think, if you, you'd have rich pickings if you just spent one day there. And it needs some sort of deterrent. I think if you did it for one day, that would send out a message because I think that from the report that's coming up, that I don't think any FPNs have been issued for contravention of the restriction times.
Thanks, I think we've got the message on that and we can discuss it further under the Safer Streets update, but it's, it's good to get it on Rachel's radar while she's here.
I'll ask, probably still be here, to be honest, so that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take Fiona.
Hi, Rachel, I'm Fiona, I'm one of the Frum Town councillors. I haven't managed to go on a Walk and Talk yet, but I did actually give a quote of Frum Towns about them and I have had a meeting with Ellis as well, because I've been working with Frum College and a couple of the girls there had raised issues.
We are, we are going to bring in, that's a new thing, youth walk and talk as well.
Brilliant. That's really great and first of all, I just want to get that, did I hear that right, that there's sort of over 2,000 offences for violence against women and girls in Frum, but the equivalent is 800 or something?
Not in Frum, no.
Okay, in Somerset East.
So from here down to Chad, yeah.
Okay. I think it's great, I think the Walk and Talk is a great initiative and it's great everything you're doing, but when you spoke, you spoke about how the aim is to sort of help women and girls feel safer, more confident, but are you doing anything to tackle the cause of why we don't feel safe and confident, which is men being violent, rather than just...
Yeah, well, yeah, and that will, out of those conversations.
Okay.
The whole point of the Walk and Talk is the talk as well and that will then give us some data and give us some information and give us some feeling, but that's the whole objective of it, is for that Walk and Talk, yeah. Are you going to go on one, did you say?
I will, yeah, at some point, yeah. Slightly busy at the moment, I will try.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to make sure that the emphasis is on the people perpetuating the violence and not on the women and girls. I just think that's a really important distinction to make.
Yeah.
And that we're not sort of perpetuating the idea that it's women and girls that are putting themselves in danger.
And I think what would be nice in perhaps in, probably in six months' time when we've had some more in Frum, because we want to obviously publicise it and encourage it, we're going to youth Walk and Talk and obviously the standard Walk and Talk is to come back and give you a little bit of an update and that's how that's gone.
Okay. Anita wants to come back on that and then I'll take Nick and then Dave.
Yeah, thanks for that Fiona, for raising that. Just interestingly, Rachel, when I first saw, talked about Walk and Talk, I spoke to your predecessor because I checked it out on the website as if I wanted to go on one of those and looked for Frum and of course I looked under Somerset North because that's, I just assumed that that was where we were. And when I rang to say, Frum isn't listed, what do we do about this? And she explained then that it's part of Somerset East.
Yeah.
But I wonder how intuitive that would be to people who actually check out how to access Frum.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any way of making that simpler or whether it could appear under both East and North or whatever, not sure.
It should be because it's, yeah, it's only, it's being rolled out in certain areas at the moment, so I'll look into that for you. It's a good point.
Thanks. So I'll take Nick, then Dave and then I think Sean wanted to come in. Nick?
I'm conscious there are some members of our brilliant independent business community in the room who probably want to ask a question, so I just want to just frame it around, maybe Rachel, you can help. You talked about priority setting, you set a priority for an area, a sort of region, it would be helpful maybe if you could explain how that is, how you do that, because I know, I mean, just today I was looking at a WhatsApp group that we have with our traders in Frum and there were two blatant prolific shoplifters going through Cheap Street and I think at Catherine Hill, known to the community. It's alarming at this time of year, obviously there's a real problem for them. And it would be really helpful, I guess, to explain how you as a neighbourhood inspector, how your team would go around tackling a problem that was perceived by the group, having seen that, how you would go about it.
So well firstly, so you in good, how is the communication? Because there's some area of our business, some area of our collaboration, some areas of our policing that, between us and the community and the communication is, I would say, in some areas is broken down. That's not so much in Frum, but other areas that I've been to in the last sort of two or three weeks, you know, Wells for example. But, so there is that perception and there's that reality. And I, the team, quite timely, walked in on the team this morning and they were having a team meeting, the town staff and the local officers. And I explained that I was coming here this evening and, you know, and I asked them, what do you think your priorities are at the moment? You know, and some of the things they were mentioning is, is people reporting because they don't feel as though people are speaking to us, talking to us, communicating with us. So what I would ask first, because I want to look to improve that, because the perception is sometimes very different from the reality. The reality is, and I'm happy to do a demonstration and show you this next time, I don't know if it's done before by Matt Reed, Paul you may know, if he's done a click about our crime data and where we get is our, has he done that? So you see that, so that's where we get our priorities from basically. But we also get it obviously from, you know, when we're walking out, when we're engaging, when we're talking, when we're hearing things and social media. We've got to be very careful in going down certain avenues with that especially. But you mentioned recently, and I've been thinking about since, so I've met Nick, just a bit of an inaugural meet, and I know that you have a good working relationship with the sergeant and Ellis and you meet them once a month, which is good, about a business crime, business retail group that isn't very well attended, I appreciate why, and whether or not that can be brought up to any better level really. We do have, and I'm just waiting for the details of it, we have a, basically a retail, well, business crime portfolio lead. I listened to an explanation about it today. There was a meeting held yesterday and how we are, we need to get better and what we're doing to look at retail crime and business crime and such. So I'll be able to furnish you with those details and what that plan looks like going forward. So that, there was a meeting held yesterday. Andy Pritchard, my chief inspector, is very good at sort of mentoring and supporting and trying to encourage some of our supervisors to take some, a better level of responsibility in the areas. So he gives, he gives our supervisors portfolios. So Dan Jeffries here in Frum has a portfolio for hate crime and somebody has a portfolio for VOG, but we've also got a business crime portfolio lead who I met today. So he went to a force-wide meeting yesterday and it's, it's being addressed, so. But what I would ask is how, how well do you think the communication is with the team? You, you've got my number and you may have officers' numbers, but how do you feel like the communication is with the team? Are you relying on seeing them or how do you reach out to them and in terms of reporting stuff to them?
I mean, I think it's more, I mean, I'm happy that if there's a serious incident happens, I can contact, I can make contact and if you're on duty, if your team are on duty, I can speak to them. It's more about when there's a concern in the town centre, in town centre businesses about something happening, how, how do they know that that's being dealt with by, there's a focus on that from the neighbourhood team?
I suppose you mentioned sort of two well-known shoplifters walking through the town, what would your expectation be for that?
I guess, is there a, is, do the neighbourhood team have a priority to tackle retail crime in the town centre? And I know you're probably going to say, is there a problem with it? Well, the numbers of crimes are being committed.
Yeah.
So I would expect that that crime has been reported.
Yeah.
Evidence is provided to the police and your team will look at that and realise that this is maybe an escalating pattern or maybe it isn't. It's just, how do you...
Oh, yeah, certainly. I mean, we've got, we've had really a good success this year. The team are telling me this morning about they've had four criminal behaviour orders issued to known shoplifters, well-known shoplifters. There are one or two emerging now, but it's all about those interventions, but it's all about gaining that evidence. And those criminal behaviour orders, we don't, we don't just come in and give them a criminal behaviour order. Unfortunately, it starts at that lower level. So whether it starts as intelligence and arrest and arrest and arrest and keep going that way. The, when I spoke about the road safety operation, one of our, one of those arrested was a, one of our prolific offenders and it was behind the wheel and, and you know, we caught him then and that, you know, was that chance? Yeah, probably. Are they looking at shop theft? Yeah, absolutely, because we have, we do have a dedicated, you know, town centre team. What they said to me this morning is that the level of reporting isn't as good as they would like it. I've, I'll just grab that. This details how to report, how to report online, what to do if you've got CCTV, just This details how to report, how to report online, what to do if you've got CCTV, just, yeah, so I've left a few copies here with you. But, I mean, we and my team are happy to meet any retailers. I mean, I, I think, I would, they go, you know, the, the sort of shop watch retail meeting isn't as well attended as the pub watch, I appreciate that. So how can we get around that? How can we problem solve this? How can you feel heard? How can you talk to us? So we are flexible with our shifts, we are flexible with our, we can be flexible with our time to come and meet a group of you. So I think we should, I think we should do that, because I'm sensing that that communication needs to improve and that understanding and perception then can be perhaps.
Okay. Can I bring Dave in? Can I ask you to use a microphone please, Dave?
No, Nick's preempted a bit what I was going to say, but just to follow up, I mean, I'm on the same WhatsApp group, I've got a shop.
Okay, yeah.
I don't get shoplifters in because it's a hairdresser, so it's very difficult to steal a hair. But, but anyway, but no, this, I saw the WhatsApp today and a couple went up through the town allegedly with stolen goods stuffed up the jumper openly.
Yeah.
And I think a couple of times they may even got a little bit aggressive when they were challenged, and that's not the first time that's happened. So it's not just shoplifting.
No.
It's a bit of aggression at times.
Yeah.
And I have a son who's got a shop just down the road who's six foot two and 14 stone, he doesn't have a problem.
No.
It's, it's other people who feel quite frightened at times of how they're, how they're dealt with by shoplifters. And it seems that even the shop people know who they are, they know their names, they know almost, in fact, it was on the line, they said someone said, let's go and knock on their door and get our stuff back. I mean, it's the last thing they want to be doing, but that's the way it's going. But they also, sorry, they also feel, I would judge, that the police don't react very quickly and almost are not interested. Now, I know that's not right, but I think if you, if we could get a meeting together, Nick, and get those WhatsApp group in the same room and say to them, look, if you really want to get this sorted out, get to the meeting. If you don't come, you won't be able to say you've.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'd be more than happy to get involved with that, Nick.
Yeah. A WhatsApp group in Wells is just, sorry? Yeah. Just out of interest, just out of interest, you saw two, two adults, was it male, female today? Yep, no, but so today, so was, was that reported? Okay, how was that reported? Okay.
And there's videos of them as well?
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it'd be good to go through that reporting process with you, because the team were on today, they've been on since seven this morning, so it was interesting, because they've been in the town. So we'll have to, we have to unlock any barriers in terms of reporting and us responding, but that, that's the see. Listen, I'm happy to ask the team, and I've come along myself with the sergeant and meet, and we'll unlock some, we'll hopefully, you know, we address that perception and that fear and we'll go through that reporting and we'll go through the proportionality and what to say when you report and we can go through that, that's not a problem.
That sounds like a constructive way forward.
Yes, certainly.
I know Shane wanted to come in, there's a gentleman just behind you, if you can pass the microphone back there first.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to back up what was just said, like, since September, I've personally reported six separate instances that none of them have been followed up by the police service. We feel really let down actually. They haven't just involved like theft, it's been drug use on the street, on Cheap Street. We've also had an incident of a young girl walking home that we've had to assist because she was almost, well, I don't really know what was going to happen, but she was attacked by two men. All reported, but nothing, nothing happened, so.
So just out of interest, and that female that you thought was attacked by two men was reported, but you didn't get an update?
We. Well, she didn't receive an update, there's been nothing, no community outreach or anything.
No. Okay. I can talk to you offline and look at that, because I, I'd be very surprised that anybody getting attacked by two men just wasn't followed up.
Yeah.
I can, I can hopefully unlock that.
It was reported over phone. My wife reported it and then I backed up the report. We've also had people doing drugs, but also stealing from the shops and then selling for a duration of time at the end of Cheap Street. This happened for about two weeks across September, and even though we reported it multiple times to the police, not just us, but other traders as well, no, no one showed up. We had, well, we had one police officer show up, they showed up for five minutes, they spoke to the person, and then they said that they had something else come up in Shepton Mallett and they had to head off. So there's just not really the support when reporting things. We don't feel taken seriously and we're always on the ground, you know, if there's not enough police officers in the local town.
Absolutely. I said that to the team this morning, I said, our retailers, our business, yeah, community are eyes and ears as much as we are.
Yeah.
As, as Nick knows, we, we do have a shift pattern where we're always on and always off, but when we're off, obviously the patrol officers, and if you're saying that officer now to go back to Shepton, that sounds like a patrol officer, but I urge you, I really do urge you to come and meet with us, come up to the police station, we've got a, you know, conference room, come and have a chat with us and we'll go through like step-by-step reporting, expectation, yeah, not, not an issue.
Yeah, yeah, perfect, thank you.
I think the communication, sorry, the communication is the most important thing because for people to report is very important, but it's also very important that you report back, because they think nothing's being done. You might be doing a great job, but if you don't tell them, they never know.
Absolutely. And that, that goes, that goes along many thematic areas of our policing world, it really does. And it's one of the things that I've said at the beginning, that we're very good at doing stuff and we're perhaps not so good at telling people why. Yeah.
Okay, and I'll take councillor Shane Collins and then I think Gav just wanted to come in and then we'll wrap this topic up.
Thanks very much for the presentation, fascinating. I try to get this stuff from the Police and Crime Commissioners and I get an email newsletter from them, which frankly is, it would be great if some of your stuff could come through them, because they're, it's not very good email, basically, it's not a very good email letter and this is far, far better.
Thank you. And I believe that the PC was invited, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not very, second thing is.
Just, sorry Shane, just, I'll try and, I say the word unlock a lot, but I'm trying as, as a, you know, new back in here and to understand your issues and your problems, but I will make contact with the Office of the OPCC and see what we can do for a in-person next year.
Great, thank you. And I don't know if you remember the old postcard, you know, there's more crime in the sweets than crime in the streets. You've talked quite a lot about street crime. I wonder if you could just enlighten us a bit more about sort of white collar crime, fraud, online fraud, tax evasion, that sort of thing. And final question, you mentioned the roads policing teams. Are those random stops or those automatic number plate recognition based stops or?
Yeah, there, there is a combination really. We've got our intelligence, so that operation that we had, as I said, was supported by our intelligence officers, and it was obviously ANPR and local knowledge. The luxury, like you said, is that the eyes and ears, the luxury of how that was such a success that day in Froom was because it was all planned, that the local officers would jump in with the road policing units who come from all over, and it was some of our PCSOs that led to some of those arrests with their local knowledge, because some of these people decamped, as you know, and got out of the car and ran and with the local knowledge that was there and then, just like you provide us about the shoplifters, we were able to provide to our road policing colleagues, which led to some really successful, yeah, arrests and convictions. I think probably the white collar crime is a, probably something for another day, it's quite a big, big chunk of, I mean.
I think it's probably not Froom specific, so we'll probably take that topic offline if you don't mind, Shane.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy to have a chat with you.
I do want just to let Gav get his question in and then we'll move on.
Just in relation to the roads policing, I'm wondering what can be done in particular about the number of lorries travelling the streets of Froom, in particular the ones blatantly flouting the seven and a half ton weight limits just to travel between the Shepton and Froom roads. I mean, on any given day, you can count at least 20 and more lorries passing down the butts, they're blatantly inflating those laws.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I'm a local road user and I regularly travel from obviously Froom to Shepton, but it's about enforcement and that's why very much working with Dan Cox from our Road Safety to get a more visible presence in the town. So at the moment, our road policing units are based in Almendsbury and Bridgewater, and they're very far away. So what we need is a footprint here, as we did many, many years ago. That's something that we're working towards and that's one of the things that I've been speaking to Ashley all flying about, a potential scheme to set up a kind of a lorry watch thing as well in conjunction with CSW.
Great, thank you. So really helpful from a police perspective. Did you also want to give us a couple of minutes on some of the fundraising work you've been doing?
People must be bored of that by now, surely. So, yeah, my mum died over a decade ago and since then I've been raising money for We Hear You, for Y, local charity, and lots of you, some of you in the room have joined in with my various challenges fundraising over the years, currently running a mile a day for them, which you think, well, it's only a mile, it's not far, but I don't enjoy running, I've never done a park run, but it's all about embracing the community. So my challenges started off a few years ago just by myself and then my family and friends, and then I've rolled out to the community. So lots of people are involved with a couple of world records, rowing and such, but at the moment I'm running, yeah, a little old mile a day. And people come and join me, I will put up on social media where I'll be and I have no idea who will turn up. And they come and run with me, I give them a Y vest, they donate, and then we go on our way. We have 10 minutes chewing the fat about our day and then we go again. There could be one person joining me, it could be 12. It's been a great success for the charity and for the community. I've been into schools on my days off, so I've ran with over 1,000 children this year in our local schools here in Froom. And what they've told me when I'm running with them is, yeah, well, I've been brought to tears by the school miles telling me, you know, how that, the, sort of some of their family are suffering from cancer and, and, yeah, so it's, yeah, it's been quite an emotional year. I haven't told the people that are running with me, but ITV, ITV News have picked up on it, so they're coming to the town in the next few days to come and do a little bit of filming for it, which is great, because it will put our town on the map and it will put the charity on the map. So, yeah, we'll all culminate in a big final mile on New Year's Eve at Froom Rugby Club.
Thank you very much.
And just, just finally, I'm, I'm happy to return at any time next year. I could have done a PowerPoint in each of those topics, but I appreciate timing, so, but it is very useful to have an agenda and what you want me to talk about, because there's a million and one things. So, yeah, I'm, I'm happy for it to be regular, because I think, like I said, communication is key.
That's great. Thank you, thank you very much. Anita, you were next up, is there anything that Rachel hasn't covered that you wanted to speak to? Yeah, by the way.
Thanks, Rachel, very much for all of that. And I can't believe that you actually covered the whole list, which is amazing. But I think, if you don't mind, I'm going to expand on some of those things. We, we do know, of course, that road safety is a major worry for Froom. And as Froom grows, as the town grows with more housing likely, I think, well, I would imagine that situation is only going to get worse. So we have to make sure that we all work together to keep the town as safe as we possibly can. But don't forget that as the public, there are things that we can do as the public. Thank you. Want me to eat it? So I, I think it's worth noting that on the Crime Stoppers, the charity that Rachel mentioned, if you report to Crime Stoppers, you can do that completely anonymously, and that really is worth a go. So you don't get tied up with anything, but if you suspect anyone of drink or drug driving, even if it's not, you know, using a mobile phone or whatever, you can report that through Crime Stoppers and then stand back and have nothing more to do with it. But of course, there are other ways you can report those worries if you have them, which is not only to go on to the Avon and Somerset Police online form, report it there, or you can ring 101, or of course, if you see it actually happening at the time, then you can of course ring 999. So we've all got a job to do as the public as well, I think. As you know, road safety is very important to Froom Town Council, and my role has been to work with all the agencies who help to address these problems, which is not, you drink, drive, driving, excess speeds, it's use of mobile phones, not wearing seatbelts, just erratic driving behaviour really, and all those sorts of things. We need to make sure that we're watching. And I think it's well, well worth saying that not just the police, but the speed enforcement units, the community speed watch, they're all on the case. And I'm working, like a lot of people, with our Somerset councillors, with Anna Sabine, our MP, and we can, we continue to plead with Somerset about, you know, doing something that will actually end up improving the road safety around us. And I'm delighted, of course, that Selwood Parish Council are also making their voice heard in a big way. And I think between us, we're becoming quite a force to keep up this momentum with lots more discussions planned in the future. And as you'll know, doubt here later, we've been working with Sustrians as part of the Safer School Streets Plan, and managed to secure a well-needed, a much-needed crossing at the butts, which has gone down pretty well. We are being asked to look again at the pros and cons of looking at a 20 mile an hour town-wide speed limit. I know there are lots of strong feelings on either side, but I'll be working with Jane Llewellyn. And between us, we're going to pull together all the stakeholders who might be involved in that group and start to discuss what, if anything, is needed. Be really good to get you guys involved in that as well, Rachel. So we'll keep you updated on that. But if you know of anybody who hasn't been approached already by email, by myself or Jane, that would like to be involved in that group discussion, then please let me know and we'll make sure that you're included. I know Rachel's covered the recent police focus in Froom, but some of the work that the community speed watch and the speed enforcement units have done show us that the Froom Town Centre actually is much improved in terms of speeding of late, so that's a good thing. Styles Hill is much improved. We've seen some improvement on Womitster Road, although that continues to be a difficult one. Bath Road, on the other hand, the speeds are appalling and we've seen speeds of 60 plus in Bath Road, which is horrendous really. And likewise around Berkeley School, you know, considering there's a little school there and they're narrow country lanes, 50 and 60 miles an hour is just way too much. So, and Old Ford, I think, was another one, that on the way out of town, people there were recorded at doing between 60 and 70 miles an hour, and 150 people were recorded there recently doing excess speed, 5% of whom went to court. So, you know, there's work being done and it is proving invaluable. On the A361 Froom bypass, I just wanted to give you an update on what Somerset have had to say about their feelings on it. They said, separate to the cluster site analysis, because they look at clusters of accidents and fatalities, an assessment of the bypass, excuse me, and its injury collision records, thank you. There will be injury collision records carried out later this year to establish whether there is a priority for future investment. The Road Safety Engineering Programme, which manages this, tell us that there are 22 routes on the list for assessment, so it's by all means not definite that we will get treated first or even high up the list. But dependent on those patterns, I actually asked if they could set up a 50 mile an hour speed limit down the bypass. But they've said that the, they're concerned that the signs alone wouldn't be enough to guarantee reduced traffic speed, and therefore that may not really reduce collisions. Police have had experience of this being an issue in other schemes, more significant measures would be likely to be needed. Thank you. And any funding for that scheme would be dependent on their findings, so we still have to wait and see really. You may or may not know that unmarked vans have now been brought in. Do excuse me, I was struggling with the aftermath of the cold and it's driving me nuts, I don't know about you. Yeah, these unmarked vans, there are six of them, which were launched recently in this area, it's not just Froom, but in this area.
They have been here.
They have been here, yeah. And we know actually that two of those are, all of them rather, have got this 360 degree radius, radius, so they can see not only in front of them or what's behind them, but along the sides wherever. So even if people who normally would be caught, just, you know, slow down as they're passing a police van and then speed up again, these guys can really track them all the way around. So that's been really useful. Lots of things on there I won't cover, but. So I think really just a brief expansion on some of the things Rachel's already talked about, but I think it just remains for me to say a huge thank you to all my colleagues that we're working together with independently, a lot of the work they do on their own, but between us, I think, Somerset Council colleagues, Selwood Parish Council, all the senior police officers and the neighbourhood policing team, the speed enforcement unit, Community Speed Watch, and of course, their input goes a long way into the use of these sort of unmarked vans and where the speed enforcement units go. And of course, Anna Sabine, and I'm confident that by continuing to work together, we will achieve the best results possible. Thank you. My apologies.
Thank you very much, Anita. Okay, so those were the sort of pre-meeting presentations. We're now ready to move into the, the main agenda, which starts with me asking if there are any apologies for absence.
Max White, Polly Lang and Tracey Ashford.
Okay, so I think Anne Hills proposed those, Fiona Barrows seconded, all those in favour. Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any councillors who need to declare specific interest in any of this evening's agenda items? No, don't look so. The minutes of the last meeting.
Can I make a correction, please? In the first item agenda, it says I suggested that people for Paksaddle could work with Liv West, I didn't, I said could they, they could work with Faculty, Froome Area Community Land Trust. Definitely didn't say Liv West.
Thank you.
Check. So the top of the second page, second paragraph, Fiona suggested comprised people that could work with Faculty.
Faculty, yeah, Froome Area Community Land.
Okay, thank you. I think there was an open item, Peter was going to follow up on the Weymouth Road situation. I don't know if there's any further updates on that yet, Peter.
Well, as, as council knows, I wrote to councillor Richard Wilkins and also Duncan Sharkey, chief executive of Somerset Council, on a couple of occasions actually, over the 13th and 14th of November, to try and get some clarification around the implementation of what was resolved at council in October. As part of that, there was a suggestion that we had not gone through due process in terms of that meeting, which I refuted and provided evidence to support that. Since I wrote to councillor Richard Wilkins on the 14th of November to refute that, I've had no reply to that. However, on the same date, Steve Deakin, who is the service manager for Parking Services, wrote to councillor Martin Dimmery and Coppen Me Inn, and he said, please be assured there is no intention to disregard the resolution passed by Froome Town Council or to suggest the process is incorrect. However, we, we still haven't received any confirmation that the, that the scheme, sorry, that the Weymouth Road scheme will be removed, and no indication as to when. So that, that's the, the update.
Okay. I believe the signs have disappeared, but I don't think that's an official action. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know how we escalate this further, the, you know, Somerset Council gave us the right to make a decision, we made that decision, and it's not being carried through.
I, I suggest between Peter and I, we, we write to those, to Duncan and Richard again and again and again until we get a response. Otherwise, there is a danger, I would assume, that they will be just kicked into the long grass. Would that council like me to do that?
And I mean, I think it's, it also does not send out the right signals about the partnership that we want to work through with Somerset Council, if they're going to, well, you know, roughshod over decisions of this body. So yes, do you need a vote to take that forward?
No.
Okay, we'll get that done, thank you. Other than that, anybody else got anything arising from the minutes, or you're happy that I signed them as a true and accurate record of the meeting? Proposed by Nick, seconded by Steve, and Carla and Mel are just about to put their hands in the air. I think that's unanimous. Thank you. So we then move on to questions and comments from the public and councillors. Steve, I had a question for you, if you don't mind, if you could give us an update on what happened yesterday at the planning meeting of Somerset East?
Yeah, sure. For those who don't know, they discussed the Selwood Garden Community application, and after a pretty long debate, the resident, the, the vote was taken to defer and minded to refuse. That was the term I think they used, Duncan jumping at some point, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think what we think they're going to do is go away and come up with a list of reasons why they don't like the application as it was presented. So we did our three minutes, as did Selwood Parish, Friends of River Froome Civic Society, we sort of worked closely together so that we all focused on different aspects of the, of, of the proposal. Otherwise, you just, well, we, we couldn't get through three minutes anyway. There was no chance of getting through it.
Crazy, isn't it, three minutes to talk about the next 15 years?
It is, it is right, and that was, that was the last paragraph of my speech, unfortunately I was timed out, so I didn't get to say it. Which is slightly ironic. The, yeah, it, it is, it is absolutely crazy. We wrote to the Planning Board before the meeting, we will write to the Planning Board again probably next week. I don't know what's going to happen, it does give us the opportunity to fully engage with the Planning Board. I mean, the, the two areas that we focused on was the Section 106 agreement and the overall governance of the, of the delivery of the plan. With the Section 106, we haven't been consulted. Lord only knows why, it's absolutely crazy. A lot of the councillors there were talking about community and vision and what it brings to Froome, yet they don't seem to want to engage with the people of Froome, which is a little bit daft. So we will be writing to them to basically say, we want to engage, we're here to engage, please engage. With regards to the governance, we proposed that a local delivery vehicle was set up in order to oversee the, the delivery of the plan should it go ahead, because the, the delivery is 13 years from memory. Again, we'll be pushing very hard for something like that to, to be put forward, because it needs some sort of governance.
Thanks.
So that's where we are.
Okay. Dawn, do you want to come back and give us maybe what your view of any next steps would be?
Well, yeah, so it's not a deference or deferral, deferral, I just made up a new word. But it's, because a deferral means that we have to give the reasons at that meeting why we are deferring, and those are the ones that they address. But the, the, the motion that we went for, we haven't used ever as a planning committee, which was minded to refuse, and they can, we can go away and have the discussions about what it is that we want them to come back with in February. So that's the plan, and I think there's quite a long list, they felt like it was a shopping list, but once we've got all of those things, then we can then make the final decision. Did you want me to carry on if there's anything else, or? Or just the planning thing, or do you want?
Just let's focus on the planning thing for now. I know Shane and then Fiona maybe.
Just to add that the four councillors on the Planning Board representing Froome councillors, Denton, Dimmery, Boydun and Kay, all voted for refusal and therefore represented the overwhelming view of, of the five or 600 objectors and all the civic societies in Froome. And a quick update on Saxon Vale, it's going to come to Somerset Executive in, I think it's the 23rd of January, and we've got a pre-meeting before, but they're not talking to anybody else, it's all looking like it's going in the right direction.
I believe that meeting's going to take place in this building.
Dawn, can I just ask, my concern is, I watched the second half of the meeting while putting up my Christmas tree yesterday, so I was, I was listening. My concern is that by refusing the decision, I think we can all assume that LGA are going to appeal it, given how much they have invested in the site and in the development of it, and that by refusing something at council, essentially now the decision goes, and it will be the proposal as is, will be what essentially the national government sort of decides on. So then any sort of changes that we might be able to make, like what Steve has said to the Section 106s, to the, the local, to adding in more governance, will be lost, and we've sort of lost that opportunity to kind of actually change it, because I think, you know, it, it is probably likely that it will get through on appeal, I don't, you know, I, I think I'm okay saying that, but there's a good chance that it would, and therefore what we're going to get is going to be exactly what is being proposed at the moment, which isn't good enough. But we've kind of lost the opportunity to make it better, is, is my concern.
Yeah, and I think that, that's the loss of a deferral rather than a minded to refuse, because on a deferral, we can say specifically what it was that we wanted changed, which would then have been adapted for the, for the meeting in February, we've given them two months. So that's the one issue that we've got with the, with the minded to refuse.
Okay.
Is there anything you can do though, to sort of try and make it or not?
No, you just have to go with the process, that's just how it is unfortunately.
Mel, I think you wanted to come in.
Just a quick one. I listened to three quarters, so I may have missed this point in the first part of the, of the discussion. But I just hope that the councillors who represent us will think about the 500 social housing units that are proposed on that site, of which most of them are to be rental, which is what people want, and the implications for young people starting new homes and children getting somewhere to live within their local community is, should be almost paramount in the thoughts of some of our decision makers. And I didn't hear it raised, it might have been in the first part.
Okay, thanks. So I'll go to Dawn and then actually we can carry on with any other topics from Dawn, if that's okay with you, Shaun.
I think everybody in the room felt that, but we want the very best, and I think if we just went with the plan that is there in front of us, then that would have been, there would have been other issues besides the housing that we'd want repaired with the plan. So instead of just, you know, I think the focus, and everyone is acutely aware of the, of the accommodation issues and the housing issues. So I think we were hoping to, we have to do the very best for Froome irrespective and for the area, and as, and as, you know, as I said yesterday, there's a very big impact. So I think that is, is a priority, but it's also that the other issues that we need to have addressed, which I'm, I'm hoping that irrespective of what happens in February, at least, you know, we, we've discussed and given the very best option for Froome for everything, for the river, for the environment, for everything, so yeah.
I think Steve just wanted to come in on that.
Just make one point, Andy, that for those who watched the meeting, I was, I was there as well, it, it seemed to me that the whole setup of the meeting couldn't cope with a development of that size. There was so much detail, so many questions, that you just couldn't get through it in, in, in the time, you know, in the afternoon available. And I, and I guess that's why the decision was made where it is, but things like the affordable housing is, is absolutely paramount for everyone, and I would hope that at some point now that there, there is conversations happening offline.
Thanks. And Shaun, you wanted to come in and then we'll move on.
Yeah, just a correction on that, although it is 510 affordable houses, of that 30% affordable, only 70% are for social rent, so 356. No, they, they changed it to 70.
80 was the policy and the 70 was what they were offering, I believe.
Correct. So that works out at an average of 23 social rent homes over 15 years, but the first one wouldn't be built for six years after the build-out, so 2030. You know, initially I was very attracted by it because of the social home rent side of it, but, you know, in reality, it's about on average 23 a year, and it's not going to affect the 1,200 people on a gold and silver waiting list at the moment in Froome.
Okay.
Sorry, East End Mender.
Thanks for clarifying that. Okay, so if we can move on to any other questions from councillors, Dawn, I know you'd got something.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things. Oh wait, what were they? Hang on, they're coming back to me. Oh wait, yes, so I met with, with Nick a few months ago to discuss the Froome business and the town centre, and I was invited down to Bridgewater to speak to the LCN about the successes that Froome has, and Bridgewater is really very impressed with Froome, so I thought I would just pass that on. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is I'm now the opposition lead for public health, climate and environment, so if there's anything you want me specifically to raise with the executive, I'm happy to, to do that on your behalf.
Okay, thank you very much. Paul, I think you've got an email in from one of our residents.
Yeah, it's about the Weymouth Road parking scheme. Kevin O'Shea, a resident of Weymouth Road, has, in his absence today, has asked me to read this out. On November the 4th, I submitted a credible suggestion to councillor Polly Lang for a compromise solution to the debate over parking restrictions of Weymouth Road. In her reply, she said, I will certainly put your proposals to other councillors and planning staff when I go to the town hall tomorrow evening, which was the council meeting. Kevin says, given that I received no further comms or feedback from councillor Lam and the parking restrictions have all recently been removed, I would like to know the following: which councillors and planning staff were made aware of my proposals? Was the, what was the extent of the discussion around them and what, if any, actionable outcomes were there? Now, I haven't managed to talk to Polly, and she has had to send her apologies this evening, but I, I will take that up with Polly and, and get, get her to answer.
Can I just add that Polly Lang, councillor Polly Lang, raised it at an internal meeting with numerous other councillors there. She did raise the concerns that the resident had said and did a very good job of articulating them, but all councillors in the room felt very strongly that we had made this decision and we had made it democratically, and the decision had been taken, and while we understand his concerns, it's, you know, the decision has been made and we had, there's so many issues, as you've heard tonight in Froome, and we just have to move on.
Thank you.
I'll talk to Polly and, and suggest that she replies to Kevin O'Shea.
Okay, thanks. Unless anybody has anything else for the Q and A piece, let's move on to the next item of the agenda, which is an update on the Froome Safer School Streets project.
Well, good evening, and I thought I'd start with what we generally consider to be the aim of this project, which is safer streets around four schools in Froome: Avanti Park, Oakville Academy, Crystal School and Trinity First School. Today, I'm not going to ask you to judge whether the streets are safer, that will come much later. We are only halfway through the 18-month trial, and we need to continue to monitor, we need to listen to feedback from the community before we come to a judgment on that. But what I'm going to do is, is highlight the, the main things that we've been involved with in partnership with others. Partnership has very much been a theme of, of tonight so far. We have been working in partnership with Somerset Council, with Sustrans, the active travel charity, we've been working with local schools, local residents, and other interested parties with, you know, with a view to implementing this scheme. So we're going to, I'm going to explain what we've done. I'm going to report on monitoring to date, and there is more to come. to date, and there is more to come, and I'm going to highlight what's going to come next. I thought it might be helpful also, alongside that principal aim, to highlight some of the key objectives of this scheme, what we're trying to achieve in the context of trying to secure safer streets around these four schools. The first one really is very much about a better layout for the, for the roads around these schools, and principally that's about enabling safer pedestrian crossing points around those schools, that's number one. Number two, as you'll be aware, priorities have changed, particularly in relation to Nunny Road and Oakfield Road, there is now a change priority in favour of cyclists on the National Cycle Route, which is why the, the priorities have changed on that junction, that was the principal reason for changing those priorities. We, we talked earlier about the timed restrictions, and in the report, there is detail on what those timed restrictions are, and those are designed to reduce traffic volumes within the, the specific school streets at peak times. We have already extended the twenty mile per hour zone, and I'll show you in a minute the areas that, that have benefited from that, but that really is, is intended to benefit all pedestrians and all cyclists, not just young people, but anyone using these streets in the neighbourhoods around the schools. And we've also been working to encourage young people to travel actively, so there's been work going on in the schools to explain the benefits of, of active travel, the benefits in particular to wellbeing for school-aged children. So I mentioned, I would show you a plan, just to remind you of the area that, that we've been focusing on, so the red lines that you see there are effectively the areas that now have time restrictions on affecting drop-off and pick-up of young people. The blue lines represent the roads which now have new twenty mile per hour speed limits. I'm aware that there is still some snagging work to be done to ensure that all of the roundalls are on the road, there's also some work to be done to correct some of the signage, but, but largely, that new wider twenty mile per hour zone is, is now in place. Just to say a little bit about the engagement that we've done, I, I mentioned that a little, a little earlier, but my colleague Katie Fraser, who can't be with us tonight, has been working very hard with the schools and with the teachers within the schools to enable students to learn about the benefits of cycling and walking, there have been lots of activities that have gone on within the schools to, to, to try and generate a, a sense of fun and positivity around walking and cycling. We have engaged with and garnered support from a number of local residents and the school communities, we've put new infrastructure in place, and I'll, I'll show you in a, in a minute a before and after picture, just so you get an impression really of that infra, that new infrastructure that's been put in place, and that very much is there primarily to, to influence driver behaviour, but also, as I mentioned earlier, to try and ensure that there are safer pedestrian crossing points. We've also liaised closely with our colleagues within Avon and Somerset Police on a regular basis around the topic of enforcement, we've also worked closely with Somerset Council in connection with enforcement of the parking restrictions, so that there's been quite a bit of engagement work that has gone on since the trial started. I thought you'd be interested in this before and after picture, and I think you'll agree with me, it's quite stark in terms of the changes that have taken place since the work started on construction, and you'll see there some of the informal crossings that have been introduced on, on these school streets, you'll notice also the change priorities on the junction of Nunny Road and, and Oakfield Road, and some of the other measures too that have been introduced, signage, planters, et cetera, the, the road has been resurfaced, the markings have, have, have been improved, I think you'll, you'll agree with me on that, and those measures are all part of, of this scheme to try and reinforce what the Safer School Streets scheme is all about. Just say a little bit about monitoring, so it's really important that we ensure that we closely monitor what actually happens on the ground. My colleague Katie Fraser has been involved with a number of periodic hands-up classroom surveys within the, within the schools, to try and establish how many young people are actually actively travelling, so walking, cycling or scooting, you know, whatever may be, may be the case. And I'll show you in a minute a, a chart which indicates that we're nudging, I think, I think it's fair to say, I think that's probably a reasonable turn, turn of phrase, we're, we're nudging along the number of young people who are actively travelling to and from school, and there's evidence to suggest that the numbers increased in the first term, so between April and July. We have been doing ourselves vehicle counts within Park Road, and our counts have suggested that between the start of the trial in April and September, there's been an average thirty-six percent decrease in vehicle, in vehicle numbers since the trial began, I'll show you a, a chart in a minute which shows that. We've also been waiting for a comprehensive monitoring report on Oakfield Road and Somerset Road, I should just say that there was some baseline survey work that was done back in October twenty twenty-two by Sustrans to help us to evaluate whether this trial is effective, and they have just completed, they completed in October this year, a, a monitoring report on that. Now, we're still awaiting the full report, but I am able to give you some summary results, and they've come to me within the last couple of hours, so this is really hot off the press. And appreciate, you'll have lots of questions about these, but I should just say that we really need to see the full report to put all of this in context, but I thought you'd be interested to, to see what we've already been advised. So first of all, on average vehicle speeds, they were judged by Sustrans in October twenty twenty-two in Somerset Road to be twenty-one point three miles per hour. This October, they were judged that, that speed was judged to have come down to twenty, twenty point six miles per hour on average. Oakfield Road North, so that's the area between Nunny Road and Broadway, the speed has come down over that period from seventeen point one mile per hour average to sixteen point two miles per hour. And Oakfield Road South, so that's the rest of Oakfield Road up to Somerset Road, the speed has come down on average from twenty-one miles per hour to twenty point four miles per hour. Of course, it's difficult for us to, to say with, with any certainty that those speeds have come down as a result of the school streets trial, there may be other reasons why that this has happened, but, but we've just, you know, we're, we're just noting the fact that, that, that the survey this year has shown a reduction in speed in those three areas. Traffic volumes was the, the other thing that I received some information about, some data about, so Oakfield Road North, which is the school street in Oakfield, in Oakfield Road, so that's the, the street that runs from Nunny Road up to Broadway and encompasses Oakfield Academy and the entrance and exit to Oakfield Academy, traffic volumes have decreased at morning and afternoon commuting hours, an average of twenty-one vehicles per day between eight and nine AM, and an average of sixteen vehicles per day, three to four PM, that's what their survey data is, is telling us. Slightly different picture in Oakfield Road South, traffic volumes have decreased in the morning by on average twenty vehicles per day, but increased in the afternoon by an average sixteen vehicles per day, slightly different pattern within Oakfield Road South. And Somerset Road, traffic volumes have decreased in the morning by on average nine vehicles per day, and increased in the afternoon by an average twenty-five vehicles per day. So it's interesting to, to, to see that summary data coming through, of course, this is, this is only one part of the evidence that we'll need to, to make a judgement as to whether the schools are safer, but I think you'll, you'll, you'll agree that it's interesting to see that early data come out from Sustrans monitoring. This is the chart I promised around the hands-up surveys, so the, the increase in active travel appears to be most marked within Avanti Park, less so in the other two, two schools where there was a survey done. I should just say that Crichill School was, was not involved in this survey primarily because many of the pupils at, at Crichill School actually have to travel by car or by bus to that school.
I can comment that anecdotally, even those pupils are making more use of active travel, as Chair of Governors at Crichill School, I do get that update.
That's, that's great to hear, thank you, Andy. And this is the, the data on Park Road vehicle counts, it, it's difficult to interpret, you know, this kind of scale, but hopefully you'll see the, the, the general pattern here between March, when these vehicle counts started, which was before the start of the trial, and September, when the last counts were done, so the average decrease in traffic, we reckon was thirty-six percent over that period. It's, it's worth noting that in all of these streets, there, there will be road users who are exempt from the restrictions, in terms of the time restrictions, and the report goes into detail in terms of what those exemptions are. So there, there will be some road users who will not be subject to these restrictions, and of course, we, we will continue to see vehicle movements, you know, throughout these, these peak times. So the last points I wanted to make really were about the next steps, so we've got another nine months left of the trial, and what I will want to do is to interrogate in some detail the Sustrans monitoring report, I've given you a bit of a snapshot of some of the data that's come out, I understand that there's more to come, so I'll, I'll make sure that that is shared with you as soon as we've been able to interrogate it. There is still some snagging work to be done in terms of the construction work, we understand that that should be completed this side of Christmas, and I'll keep you informed in terms of the date of that. There have been some delays due to weather, unfortunately, some of the work that needs to be done requires dry conditions, and it's been really difficult for the, for the contractors to schedule this work, but I'll keep you, keep you posted. Once the construction is completed, there will be a road safety audit, and that will be conducted, in fact, by an independent road safety auditor at this stage, and that will be shared with Somerset Council and with ourselves, so that we understand what the views are around road safety from the experts in road safety. And then lastly, but by no means least, in terms of our next steps, we will be doing a community perception survey in the new year, we wanted to wait until the construction had been completed before we did that, so again, we'll keep you informed about that step in, in, in the process. Regardless of that, though, and I, I said this, I think, at the last two meetings, that we are really keen to hear from members of the community about the effectiveness of this trial, whether it's negative or positive, we, we want to hear, if there are things that we can do in the short term to, to address issues that are raised, we really want to hear about that. There is an opportunity for us through the trial to make adjustments, but it's really important in terms of that judgement that, that I suspect we will have to make as a town council before this, this trial is completed, as to whether it's been effective, it's really important that we have as much evidence as possible at our fingertips, that includes not just the, the monitoring data that's coming from Sustrans and, and monitoring that we do, but also the feedback that we get from the community. So I'm going to stop there and take any questions.
Thank you very much, Peter. I mean, I think it's worth noting at this point that we never expected this to be a silver bullet that was going to be transformational at the point of launch, it was always going to be a slow evolving, but we do need to keep up that pressure, and certainly, I think, you know, there've been questions earlier about can we increase some of the police presence and some of the enforcement elements of it, I think it's important that we do keep up that pressure, because otherwise it sort of tends to peter off, but it's, it's good to know we've got some numbers behind it to start with. Dave, a question from you.
Thanks, very interesting, because I'm, I wanted to know more about it, because I drive down that road quite regularly, and it took me a while to work out what was going on, and I'm not, still not sure about signage on the road, there seems to be some sort of, is there triangular patterns down, down the road somewhere, like paintings or?
The, the patterns that you see are outside each individual school.
Okay, okay.
And what they're, what they're intended to denote is that this is a school street zone, tho, those patterns are typical within school street schemes up and down the country.
Okay, okay, but the point I wanted to make, I think one of the big issues is the signage, and I recall it, it is not good as a driver. I think if you come from Froome or up the hills by the Royal Oak, the sign is on the left-hand side there, it's not an obvious place to look when you're driving, if you're coming down from Froome, it's that side of your car, and if you're coming up, the conversation today with my wife this afternoon was, can I turn right, she says, I can't remember what time it is, we can turn right, she looked at the sign, she looked at her watch, and she said, yes, you can turn right, that's not good, you need to have the signs, you know, flat coming from Froome or flat coming from Mills with a big arrow saying if you're going to turn right or left, these are the restrictions, the one that there is not helpful, the one the other end, you can't see because the tree has grown across it, has been like it for months.
Yeah, and then...
You can't see the sign.
Yeah, the, the point about the, the signs being obscured is that our contractor is due to amend that, that situation, in some places, we're talking about having cantilevered signs.
Okay.
That are not affected by the growth of, of hedge rows.
Yeah.
But that's one of those snagging things that, that are contracted...
I understand that, yes.
The, the, the point that you've made about the signage on the junction of Broadway and Oakfield Road is well-made, I agree with you that that, that is, probably isn't sufficient to warn drivers when they're turning into, into Oakfield Road.
Having said that, it's a great initiative, so, but signage...
It's really useful to have that feedback, please keep the feedback coming, because it, it's the, it's the views that we hear from, from people on the ground that help us to, to make this scheme as effective as possible.
So I've got Fiona Gentleman over there, and then Nick, oh, okay, right, so Gentleman over there.
Thank you, so I'm here with Alan, we're representing most of the residents...
Can I ask you just to put them...
Doodley Terrace residents, so I, a couple of months ago, collated thoughts from the neighbours, and I've shared those with Carla, who's kindly shared them with Peter, they've got quite a few specific points in there, but it's mainly about, we don't perceive any real... but it's mainly about, we don't perceive any real reduction in the volume of traffic at school times. It is just at school times. And also the speed. And specifically for the Studley Terrace residents, the change of priority at Money, Money Road means that actually traffic is faster in front of the houses because they're not slowing down for the junction. Um, our main concern obviously is for the safety and we're really supportive of the fact that, you know, you're trying to make it safer for everyone. Um, but really, we've said, as Pete, as Alan, uh, kind of referred to earlier, that we don't see any real improvement. Um, and we don't feel that there will be unless something's done to enforce the restrictions that are there and the parking. Um, and it's really no better for us as residents. There still is chaos at school times with people pulling in to our private parking, with people pulling in in front of us on the zigzags. Nobody does anything about it, even when the, um, traffic people from the council were there, they stood and watched. So yeah, that's our feedback really. If something needs to be done to enforce it and to make it clearer. And I completely agree with your point about the signage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nick, did you want to come in?
Observation, um, I think it's a really important scheme, but I think if you talk about public's perception, um, there's, I don't think there's enough emphasis from us, if you like, in our communications about the element of safety and children. And I, when I was twenty-five, I was a policeman in central London and I had to drive across the river into Vauxhall and pick up the parents of a seven-year-old who'd been killed outside a school in Pimlico and take him to Westminster Hospital. And that was an accident outside the school. And that stays with me and it's something that, you know, not my story, but we should remember, maybe Rachel and Mark have had similar sort of experiences, you know, similar roles. But it's, I think it's something we should make the point. That's why we're doing it, is for the safety of children. It's the primary thing.
Um, all I can say is that we're doing what we can to get the message across. But if, if there's more we can do in terms of our messaging, um, I think that's great. We'll, 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 uh, we'll, we'll see what we can do i- in terms of our marketing and communications of the scheme. Thank you.
Okay, Carla and then we'll move on.
So for me, I feel we've, we've done everything we can. We are, you know, only a town council. The success of this scheme does depend on enforcement and it's great to have you here, Rachel. So in the six months that this trial started, we've not had police presence once to enforce that, um, E T R O. Um, and I think that is part of the problem, is that it's not taken seriously. So there are, so we live, you know, outside Oakfield School. Um, it is dangerous, which is why this scheme was introduced. And personally, I believe it is still dangerous. Um, so the fact that, you know, and I understand, you know, capacity, but if this scheme is gonna be successful, it does rely upon police presence. And there's only so much we can do with our pink high-vis and our comms and our engagement events, but essentially, people are not taking it seriously because they know it's not enforced. And whether that involves, you know, a camera, I'm also aware that potentially there is more budget that's not being used because the crossing at Broadway has been refused. That's another question I'd, I'd like to come to. But it, it feels like if we know there's not gonna be capacity for a physical being there, then maybe we should accept that and look for alternatives. Because I feel that this scheme is gonna fail without enforcement. So I'm just wondering, it's, so question, is that ever gonna be possible? That we have a police presence? And if it's not, then what are the options of looking at getting a camera? And how much is a camera?
Okay. Rachel, are you okay to take that?
Yes, certainly. We can talk, we can talk further offline. But it's interesting, so for, it's been running for nine months and not one ticket, nothing enforcement. So what, what consultation was it with the police before this, during this beginning, middle and type thing?
There was consultation with the police.
Yeah.
Um, I, I can't comment on the detail. I mean, the, the, the reality is that this, this project has had a really long gestation period.
Yeah. Um... Well, I was sergeant when it was...
Yeah.
First time round, so yeah, I appreciate that. But before I have conversation, I would just like to manage expectation and find out where were you with consultation with the police at the beginning of this, this trial? Um, what, who have you asked about? I mean, I've obviously been down in South Somerset for three years, so I'm not sure who you've liaised with in terms of the local police. What they've given you is in their response. Have we, is there anything documented or anybody know?
We, we'd need to go back to, through the documentation to, to answer that question comprehensively. Uh, I'll be honest with you, Rachel.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, you know, the, the work on this in terms of the engagement has gone on over a long period. I, I know, I know though that, that, um, at every opportunity, um, and we have regular discussions with, um, you know, with, with your local team, we've raised this, uh, and, and raised the, the importance of, of a presence on the street. But because the, the reality is that the, the time restrictions, we understand, can only be enforced by even in Somerset Police. The parking restrictions, of course, can be enforced and have been to a degree by Somerset Council and their agency, N S L.
So have, N S L have done some enforcement? They have?
They've been twice in nine months and they didn't issue any tickets.
They didn't enforce this, this project, sorry. They, they didn't enforce the project at all. They enforced people parking on the zigzags and they watched everything else.
Okay, so I think we've, we've got a clear message on that. Uh, just a quick one from Anita and then we'll move on.
Yeah, sorry, very, very quickly. Um, we're here, I mean, I've picked up because of my association with, you know, the recent crossing and various other things, people tend to email me about concerns to do with safer streets. I'm just wondering, when we get to the end of this trial and before we make a final decision, um, how will we hear about all the things that have been raised? Although the chances are, um, you know, they will come from few people, but some of them are very real. So will there be some sort of, sort of discussion in a public forum about that before a decision is made?
I, I mean, I fully expect that before we take a decision that there would be some further engagement with the community. Um, as far as all of the feedback that we've received to date, that's been, it's all been properly collated. We, we have, uh, written back to everyone who's emailed us, trying to answer their questions. Um, and, uh, we, we try on a regular basis to, to engage with the wider community. And the next one, of course, will be the, the big perception survey in the new year.
Sorry, I need to come back to the other point that I said I'd come back to, which is the crossing at Broadway. So in the initial plans that were signed off, there would be a crossing at Broadway, um, which is again, a known dangerous spot because you have come, people coming in from Watley Road doing sixty, seventy. Um, they arrive at the top of the hill and then you've got children crossing. It's a major crossing. That's where a lot of people cross to get to the school, which is the beginning of the scheme. And initially, there was gonna be a crossing there. Then we had some announcement from somebody at Somerset saying, no, no, there wasn't. They deemed it wasn't safe. So for me, this is such a bad example of computer says no. It's like, it's dangerous now. So I don't think we should just accept that. So I think we should go back to Somerset and say, did anyone actually come and stand on that street and see all those children crossing before they made that decision not to put the, the, to, to remove the zebra crossing? But I don't know if we've had an answer from that. I know we did challenge it. I'm wondering what the answer is and then have they... I would like to know that they've actually come and stood there and said that it's safer not to put a crossing and let drivers come in at sixty and children still cross at the top of Broadway.
Uh, I don't think that, that, um, they, they've commented on, on safety. The, 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 the situation is that Sustrans managed to secure some funding from Active Travel England to enable a crossing to be delivered on, on the back of some lobbying that they did. Um, and of course, the engagement that we did through, through the, through the school streets project showed how important the crossing on Broadway was to local residents. So it was great to hear that Sustrans had been successful. They then had to persuade Somerset Council to take it on, to take the project on because the design work that Sustrans did was only an outline. It had to be developed into a full scheme and it required the input of highway engineers at Somerset Council. The response that we received was that they weren't prepared to take it on, I think for a range of technical reasons. They, they felt that for one reason or another, that the, the, the junction didn't lend itself to a su- a suitable solution. I'd need to come back to you with the detail on that. I can't remember offhand exactly what those, those specific reasons were. Um, but we have pressed at the highest level for Somerset Council to reconsider this. Um, I know that Paul wrote to Duncan, Duncan Sharkey about it. Um, to, to, you know, to see if we could, you know, we could get some review of this. Um, I don't think we've, we've, we've made any, any progress in that, but Paul, Paul might be able to comment further.
We didn't make any progress and, and as far as I understand it, the money has now been sent back to government. So yeah, I, I think it's spilt milk. But not for the want of trying, I hasten to add.
Thank you. Maybe that is utterly infuriating, but, um...
Yeah.
Thank you for your efforts.
Okay, thank you for that update, Peter.
Great.
Um, in the interest of time, I'll ask Fiona now to introduce Matt.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Fiona Baz. I am Lead Counselor for Climate and Ecological Emergency. So just before Matt comes up to give a bit of an update, um, I just wanted to do a bit of joining of the dots because it's been a little while since we've updated Council on this work programme and we've got to and there have been some changes. Um, so as everyone knows, Nikki Brain, our lovely resilience manager, left about this time last year. Um, and this kind of prompted us to sort of take the opportunity to evaluate this as an area of work and the role that she fulfilled as well and to have a bit of a look at what's working, what's not working, et cetera. Um, as Lead Counselor, I've had lots of conversations or had had lots of conversations with people involved in climate action in Frum. Um, sort of, you know, what's missing, what's needed? How do we sort of, what's the next stage here? Um, and the thing that came up a lot was around coordination. Um, in the last few years, I mean, Frum is known for its, um, amazing sustainability and community-led action. Um, and we've got really rich ecology here in Frum. I think there's so much stuff sort of happening. Um, some of that's down to us, but also credit where it's due, adventure and particularly future shared in the last few years through Green and Healthy Frum has sort of prompted a lot of community climate action. Um, but one of the sort of, um, effects of this is that there's now a lot of competition for funding and there's a bit of sort of bumping up against each other. And also there seems to me anyway, and other people I spoke to, are sort of lots of things sort of happening at this level and how do we get them scaled up? How do we begin to really sort of, um, have much more of an impact? Um, so the questions I sort of kept coming back to, um, people I was having conversations with, was around sort of what's next? Like what's the next stage for Frum in terms of our, um, sustainability and our, um, climate action? And the constant question that I ask myself all the time is always, what is Frum Town Council's role in this as well? What is the thing that we can do that no one else can? Um, so part of this was then a sort of a rethink of the work programme and also the role. So we didn't do a like-for-like replacement. Matt is our new climate action lead. And the way I always think of that is, or I think of it, is it's a climate action lead for Frum. Um, so it is sort of hopefully doing more of that sort of coordination with the community, but also with businesses, with other organisations, with Somerset Council, et cetera. Um, and so yeah, so Matt came in in September. Um, so I tried not to get too over-excited when he first came in. Um, it'd been nine months or well, almost a year at that time of not having anyone in that role. Um, but, uh, yeah, he's been getting to work. And so just to say that this is, we're working closely together for the last sort of three months or so. Um, and it's still all about us sort of exploring and beginning to sort of look at what we can do and where we can really have impact in this area. Um, so yeah, so Matt's gonna talk now.
So welcome, Matt, for your maiden speech to Council.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Fiona. Um, and so which, which button do I skip to go forward? That one. Thank you. So I'm gonna speak for ten minutes now about climate action in Frum. And I thought I would just begin by introducing myself. Um, so my name is Matt. I moved to Frum in twenty seventeen. Um, I've worked on environmental issues since two thousand and two. Um, I set up a business called Eco Hustler. So for two years, um, we had a shop on Catherine Street that was next to Caffed's The Butcher. So you might have come in there at some point and, um, met me then. Um, and like Fiona, you know, I'm hugely excited by this role and the opportunity and really excited to be getting stuck in, to be working with everyone. The first stage of my role is meeting as many people as possible. So I think I've met a lot of people in this room. If we haven't met and you wanna talk about climate, please, um, come and find me. Um, I'd, I'd love to talk to you. The final slide has my contact details or just please, um, come and find me in the Council. So I know that a lot of people in this room are quite well-informed, um, about the, the climate, but I thought I would just do two slides as a kind of snapshot update. And the kind of headline here is that twenty twenty-four is gonna be the hottest year ever on record since we started, um, taking records. And it's also the first year to cross the iconic one-point-five-degree Celsius temperature for, for, for the entire planet. And that's been an iconic threshold temperature in global climate negotiations. So it's, it's really serious stuff. And this means that, um, climate and weather is changing all around the world and it's changing here in Frum. So I was lucky enough to go on a ranger tour, um, which was brilliant. And Mark was saying to me that from his point of view in Frum, it feels like we're already shifting from having four distinct seasons to having two seasons, a wet season and a dry season. And I mean, last winter, it felt like it rained for about six months without end. Um, we know that it's, the winters are gonna keep getting wetter and we know that we're gonna get more extreme heat in the summer. So these things are happening. For the next slide, this was an article that was in the paper on the weekend and that Tenbury Wells might be the first town in the UK that is abandoned due to climate change. So they've been flooded seven times in the last four years. Uh, the shop, shops in the town centre can't get insurance anymore. Um, so the, the point of sharing this is that I think with a lot of climate talk, it's always projections into the future and, and all of that. But this is really happening right now and Frum needs to take action. The kinds of things, um, that we need to be doing is adapted, adapting to the changes that are coming. And we're gonna run Frum's first adaptation workshop, um, next year, which I'm really excited about. Um, it'll be a good opportunity to think these things through. Mitigation, reducing our emissions down to, um, or as close to zero as we can get them. And we need to build resilience in the face of all the uncertainty. You know, we don't know exactly how things are gonna change. Um, and I think Frum can really be proud of leading in this space and the innovations that have happened here. And let's keep doing that because on one level, we can say, Frum is a town, the emissions are absolutely tiny. Well, that's true, but if we innovate in doing great things here and then that is replicated and scaled in other places, then it is really significant. So although the global situation is extremely disturbing, I think that the, our, our mantra has to be just do what we can locally. So this slide is just to give an overview of the kind of process with each of these green eggs being sort of, um, chunks of work that we're, we're, we're working through on the climate front. Um, so the first one is, is engaging communities, which is a huge part of, of my role. And that's, um, getting about all the conversations we're doing now. Um, alongside that, we're setting up this programme of climate-themed workshops and events. We wanna make sure that all the climate work that has been happening in the Council keeps on going, um, and ramps up. And of course, the jewel in the crown being Green and Healthy Frum and developing that and, and ramping that up for the rest of the, the programme. We also have an opportunity right now to pilot some new ideas, so that's really interesting. And all of these things are funneling us through to a new climate action plan for Frum. And I know that in the past, these have been called, um, climate adaptation and mitigation strategies and we've, we've talked about resilience. But it feels like climate action is, is a good term to kind of hold it all together. Um, and the climate action plan is where we want to get to. So the first of, of the green eggs is engaging Frum communities. And as Fiona pointed out, a lot of coordination and linking up and hearing what's out there and, and doing whatever we can to, to, to help and facilitate things. Um, working alongside Hannah and the engagement team, we really want to build in channels, uh, and ways that young people and children in particular can feed into the climate planning because of course, their lives will be affected more than anyone's by these changes that are coming down the track. Um, so a kind of working title idea is vision the future. So a kind of working title idea is vision the future. Being mindful that there are communities within Froom where it doesn't make a lot of sense to go and start a climate conversation. Speaking more generally and asking open ended questions about our hopes for the future, what we think the future will be like, not just in terms of climate, but also technology and A I and all these things that will change our lives and have a really useful engagement that will feed into our adaptation workshop and planning. With all of this, as with Green and Healthy, we always want to just be focusing on the co-benefits, also in sustainability win-wins. Froom Town Council's climate work isn't about telling people not to do things, not to go on holiday or whatever that is. We really want to focus on the sweet spot where making changes in our lives is both good for our health and our wellbeing and also good for the climate. And that's, as Green and Healthy has demonstrated, there are so many things, whether it's active travel or making our homes energy efficient, so many things are in that sweet spot. And that's really where we're going to focus our efforts. So this is just a quick snapshot at some of the events that we've got planned. In the table, they're the ones that are kind of booked in and then below that, some ideas coming up. So the first one, we're going to look at retrofit again in January with a new group of people coming together to be on the panel. As part of the Kindness Festival, we're going to be engaging children, which will be leading into Froom's first adaptation workshop, which we're going to do in May in partnership with Somerset Wildlife Trust. So that's going to be a really interesting event, but lots more in the works and will be running all next year. Some of the new ideas that we're thinking about and kind of rebooting. As a lot of us will know, Sally, who was leading on our retrofit work, left about two weeks after I started, so about two months ago. And she had done incredible work doing really detailed assessments of homes in Froom, looking at how energy efficient they are. But one thing that we know is that a lot of those homeowners got the assessment, but then haven't gone on to get work done on their home. So what we want to do is sort of rejig the effort of Froom Town Council. CSC is going to pick up, continuing to do more assessment on homes, but a condensed retrofit light, shorter version. And Froom Town Council, we want to go back to the houses that have had assessments and try and see what help they need, what support they need and work with local tradespeople to try and get more houses getting across the line and actually getting retrofit done. We want to re-engage businesses and that is both small independent businesses in the town centre, but also looking at the bigger businesses on the industrial estate. We've started looking at the businesses with the biggest roofs and we're interested in scoping out the potential for where solar could be sort of rolled out in Froom, which will help make us more energy independent and reduce the carbon footprint. We've also going to set up a climate action working group, which will help steer all this work and also steer the remit of the climate action plan. And alongside that, there may well be a climate action fund, which would be part of the community fund, but it'd be great to have a war chest so that the community groups that want to take action on climate change could access small pots of money. It's also a major priority to keep supporting the circular economy work that's been happening in Froom in general and specifically looking for a reuse centre. So another process slide, if we see these green eggs being chunks of work that we're going to get through over the next year, around next summer, we want to be going to the point that we have a new climate action plan. And the idea is that this will come out of all the engagement processes and the workshops and all the interaction with the town. We want this document to be something that everyone's been involved in, so everyone's invested in it. We don't want to create another report that is dropped on desks and then filed away. The idea is that it's going to be a working document and a living and breathing document that we can keep updating and iterating. And where do we want our new climate action plan to take us? You know, I think we really want to be as ambitious as we can do. A lot of the work that's happened in Froom and other places has been focused on the individual and the household. And we may need to start thinking at bigger scales, neighbourhood scales, townwide scales. The climate crisis is really, really scary and it threatens to change everything. But on the flip side, it's an incredible opportunity. You know, presents the opportunity for us to think, how are we going to live differently and work differently? Things are going to change radically. So I think in Froom especially, we have a real opportunity to have new ideas and push things forward. And where do we want to get to? We want to get to fossil free Froom. And a target was set in 2018 when the council declared a climate emergency. The target was set to be fossil free by 2030 or to achieve net zero is the correct way of putting it. And that's a big goal and that's only five years away, but I think that we should really go for it. And I think that, you know, this is our chance to do it. So I'm super excited to be working, everyone, and looking forward to making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Bang on time. Thank you as well. Any questions for Matt? Quick one from Dawn.
It's not really a question. It's just, I'm not sure if you've connected with the C P R E, the Countryside Alliance, because they had, they have a rooftop revolution, which is trying to encourage the big buildings to get solar panels. It might be worth connecting with them because they probably have access to funding and that kind of stuff, which would be quite useful. I've spoken to Charlotte at the medical practice a few times over the last couple of years and she's desperate to expand into the businesses, but she just doesn't have the kind of the space for it. So, and I know also that Nick was talking about the businesses in town really struggling with their recycling. And that would be something, obviously their, you know, compostable stuff is being sorted out, but the other recycling just seems a bit daft as, well, that was the phrase from Nick, a bit daft, that they've got no real collective thinking. And then the other thing was, I'm often really aware of people, not the right people, not the right people. What I'm saying is that there's more, should be more people at the table. And I know we spoke about this briefly today, but it feels like sometimes we're just talking into an eco chamber. Hi, eco, did you see what I did there? Because we often, we often speak to the same people and it would be really nice if there was something, and I know we did talk about this, that other people who are struggling maybe are not keen to engage because they've got other things that they would, you know, they need to put their energies into. But it would be really useful if we could work out who's not at the table and how we can get them to the table.
Thank you. Steve, I think you wanted to say.
Thanks, Matt. Just, I think I know the answer to this, but recently at planning, we saw one of the big buildings in Maston Trading Estate come forward for solar panels. And was it Tyco? Anyway, one of them. But it's one of a number. And if you add Commerce Park as well, it's a huge amount of roof space, which could be brilliantly used for solar generation. I don't know if that's on your radar. I've got a feeling is, I do think there was a conversation about this, but if you could just elaborate on that, if not, you know, can we have a conversation about it really?
Yes, absolutely. So we've started mapping the rooftops. And interestingly, in Maston Park, quite a few of the rooftops are actually asbestos, so are not suitable for solar. But there's lots of roofs that are and in the newer industrial estate, there are. So we're going to systematically reach out and have those conversations and also do the other bit, which is liaising with the energy companies, several of them to figure out the best ones to go with.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt. Quick one from Mel.
Do you want to give you an example, a personal example? I bought a house which had no roof insulation, no cavity insulation, poor boiler, 15 years old. I knew what I was doing and I wanted to fit solar panels, a battery and new double glazing. So I rang the retrofit people here and explained to them I was a councillor and I was told to come back in six months' time because the queue's so big. What I really wanted is just two hours of somebody's time who would say, yeah, if you use that, do that. Perhaps these are really, we've heard that these are really good installers. So I suspect that there are lots of people in that position. I mean, I, you know, I'm fairly competent, so we went ahead and did it anyway. But it must stop people who just want something smaller than that to be done. So the movement to actually giving that kind of guidance rather than doing more surveys, I think is really necessary. So I'm pleased to see you're looking at that.
Thanks. And that's totally on our radar as a major thing. I mean, we do have two tiers of retrofit work. We have what Sally was doing, which is be able to pay in really in-depth assessments. But we do have the energy champions that can come around and give more like sort of low cost tips. But the shift in work that we're going to do, we do want to do specifically that, which is we have to be incredibly careful and we're not going to recommend suppliers, but we can help to curate a sort of list of local people doing the work and do those introductions in a way that, yeah, very carefully and well thought through.
Okay, I can give you 30 seconds.
Yeah, I just want to say that some of the conversations we've been having, filling in, has been about mapping that whole retrofit process and really looking at where the blocks are. And so where are people stumbling? Where are they sort of going? And then Matt had this great idea about us kind of being the guide right through it. And the positive bit of that is also that we then really understand where those blocks are. And if, you know, we speak to four or five people and none of them can find a, you know, someone to put the solar panels and we know that that is an issue. So it's also just continuously improving our knowledge and just say, thank you so much to Matt. And also I think everyone's getting very excited, having someone new in this role. Obviously, his ambition is amazing. There is a lot to do, but it's currently, you know, one person and a few, and some extra teams, so calm down, everyone.
Very much, Matt. Thanks. Okay. And then I'll just pass over to Peter, if I may, for a very quick update on Badgers Hill.
30 seconds on this. So work has started on the repair project at Badgers Hill. So, and that's due to be substantially completed by the end of February. A date for your diary, A G M of the Community Benefit Society here on the 10th of December, 7 P M. So we have had a number of nominations for the board, so that looks encouraging. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Peter. And thank you, everybody. On that note, I'll close this meeting. Next meeting is next year, Wednesday, the 15th of January, in this room at 7 P M. Thank you all.